Have your attention placed. My name is Marty Aitkenz. I'm the chairman. We have board members, Mr. Himmel, Mr. Chen, Ms. Barry, Mr. O'Brien, Director of Inspection Services behind me, Mr. Conlin, our clerk, Mrs. Griffin. You got a cellphone? Could you please put it on quiet or vibrate or shut it off? One of the three. And if anyone's going to testify tonight, you have to stand and raise your right hand. You can't stand, let me know. If anyone's going to take, Mr. Chen, if you might, you're going to testify, please take an oath.
Okay. Do you swear to tell the truth? The whole truth, man? It's nothing but the truth in the matters now in here?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, can I have a motion for the minutes, please?
To make a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
Second.
On the motion, standing on all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, so moved. Under all business, case number ZBA 2455 out of Ward 6. In hand for variance to enclose the three balconies attached to the townhome above the garage is on the premises. The African representative here. All right. I'm going to wait till the end of the night.
One Edwin Street presence?
All right. ZBA 2459, JBC Architect LLC for variance finding special permit to demolish the existing, construct a three-story demolish the existing garage and construct a three-story rear addition in garage on the premise number 130 Willow Street. The African representative here.
No.
He said the building.
It's too sexy, Bob.
That's not.
That's one.
That's one.
I think that's good.
This is going to be.
It's one, two.
Thank you.
Oh.
First of all, Happy New Year and good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jim Chen, the architect for, of JCBT Architect. Presenting before you tonight is the follow-up revision of 130 Willow Street. So we heard some feedbacks from the board about the and the neighbors on the proposal that is sort of out of scale with the budding neighbors. So we have since reduced more in the overall scale. One of the foremost is the rear addition, which has been reduced down to 20 feet deep. The original house is 28 feet deep. So we're proposing to add another 20 feet to the rear of the property with a total depth of 48 feet. I believe it is very consistent with the surrounding homes, the homes across the street and the down toward east side of Willow Street. Those are close to 50 feet in overall depth of the main house. So we also removed the lower level garage parking, therefore reducing the overall building height toward the back of the property. We will maintain the exterior two parking spaces. So there will not be any more interior parking. The overall proposed dwelling is now at 2,425 square feet, which is a hefty reduction of 1,750 square feet in comparison to our first proposal. The existing house is approximately 1,379 square feet of living area. So the proposed first floor will be an open concept, living room, dining room, kitchen with a open office and half bathroom. On the second floor, we'll have a three bedroom plus two bath. So this proposal, I think, is very consistent with the budding neighbors. And also, and toward the front, we propose to use a hip roof, which lowers the scale of the overall building. Still maintaining a look of a two-story structure.
Any questions, Mr. Himmel?
No questions.
No, no questions, Jim.
No questions, thank you.
Excuse me, still make the three parking places?
We extend the byway further down.
You make the three dollar, so it's stacked, restacked. Okay. No further questions. Thank you.
On that, is that going to be asphalt?
Asphalt.
All the way back?
All the way back.
All right. You can have a seat. Is there anyone here want to speak in favor? Speak in favor of this project? First call? Second call? Third call closed. How was fun? I have a letter here for the DPW. It's going to be right into the record.
To Marty Aitkenz, Chairman zoning vote appeals from Changzhou Civil Engineers September 2024, 130 Willow Street, case number ZBA 24-59. We reviewed the submittal for the above referenced project. Our commenters follow. One, specify how much impervious area will be increased due to development. Two, provide plans showing the layout of utility and grading. Number three, will there be any fill or change of grade due to the development? Question about compensation. Compensation to storage may be required if fill is proposed on property. Four, upon completion of the project as build plan showing all utilities, building footprints need to be submitted along the digital file elevation certificates that will be submitted if the property is in the flood zone. Any further information required, please advise.
And just add that comment on there too, please.
There, Ms. Griffin. Relative to Willow Street addition, my remaining comment at present is to suggest that the front entrance to the house, where an exposed concrete foundation appears to face the street, that more thought be given to covering the concrete with aesthetically appropriate material. Thank you, Jim Edwards, 26 Chestnut Street, Quincy, Mass.
Thank you. Before I call it, you have a problem with that?
I don't.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you can, you can deal with that letter, okay? Great. Call a part of hearing closes. Is there anyone opposed to run the side? Step up, name an address to the record, please.
Hi, my name is Joanna Sanmasias. My current address are the, I'm in 134 Willow Street, but I moved to Women in July, but we're the owners of 134 Willow Street.
Okay, 134 Willow Street.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so I think the letter in DPW kind of covered a majority of my concerns. It was mostly like, we're increasing the amount of imperious land. You know, we, it did get shrunk, shrunk down by 18 feet, but we're still adding 10 feet of a deck of more imperious land and then the asphalt, more land that won't soak up water. We are in a flood zone. Myself and a lot of my neighbors already have mitigation systems in our basement to remove the water from our basement. I think it's a constant topic of conversation that our basement floods after a rain. So with that, including the fill, like we're, I mostly just work in terms of water and where, where's that water going to go? Is, how do we know it's not going to affect my, you know, 134 Willow Street or any of our neighbors? As in addition to that, the current restriction for the setback is 13 feet, like right now they're at six feet. And that's just because that's how the house was built originally. The extension will be at that six feet mark. That's essentially like an arms and a half length away. Aesthetically, we're kind of just looking at a big wall right in front of, right in front of us. And, and also it's going to block all the afternoon sun that we actually get. It all comes from that area. All that is going to be blocked. You know, if we get no sun in that area, leads to, you know, mold or anything growing and like siding and stuff like that. Like I mentioned, with all that said, since we have no real side yard between us, my driveway is right next to after that six feet. Like I'm just worried where that water is going to get dumped. Since there's not going to be enough land to actually absorb all that water. And like I mentioned, like we already are in a flood zone and already deal with flooded basements and rather, rather frequently based cadence. That's pretty much it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Close on the side, second call? Third call? Call a part of hearing close. On that, the cement, that driveway is there. So you're keeping that.
That's great.
All right. So you're going to add 10 feet to it. Why don't we do that in pavers at least?
Okay.
And make it work somehow, make it look right. And, and the water is the water, it is where it is. I don't think a home there is contributing to what's going to be there. I like the side of the house that what you did for it. Be voting yes.
In addition, can I comment? And in addition to that, this is in a flood zone. So we need approval from the conservation. We did design flood control vents to the left and right side of the house. So if there's ever a flood, it would just go through the crossface.
Just go through, right?
So there'll be off-site water mitigation?
Yes.
Okay. And the extension on the driveway, as Chairman said, will be pavers?
Pavers, correct.
Okay, I'm in favor.
Jim, underneath the deck, is that going to be a poured foundation or going to be pillars?
It's going to be pillars. It's open underneath, so essentially it'll drain water.
It'll drain underneath, correct. Okay. I'm in favor.
Thank you for making the changes we had spoke about last time. I'll be voting in favor.
Thank you.
Same comment.
Thank you.
Can I see, is there a motion, please?
Okay, ZBA 2459, JCBT Architects LLC, variance finding and special permit demolish existing garage, construct a three-story rear addition garage on the premise numbered 130 Willow Street, Quincy. With the addition of three parking spaces last 10 feet to be pavers, the exposed concrete to be remediated with something aesthetically pleasing for the neighbors. Make a motion to accept.
Second.
On the motion, standing on all in favor?
Aye.
Right now on tonight's agenda, ZBA 2466, and Pinsky for variance, special permit for planning to add a third floor to the existing dwelling on the premise number 170 Rota Street. The African representative here. Name an address to the record, please.
Andres Bernal with Blue Circle Studio, where the architects, address at 754 VF Tullio Parkway.
Okay, you want to speak? Name.
Adam Kepinski, owner of those.
Okay, yeah.
Joanna Curry, I live on C Street now, but I would be moving in with my kids.
Okay. You have the floor.
Right, thank you very much, Chairman and members of the board. So we were here about a month ago presenting the project. And I believe that most of the comments that were, we received were aesthetic, aesthetic comments. We wanted to, the, the board wanted to make sure that the, the sign was more in keeping with the two and a half story sort of field that the zoning is asking for and most of, some of the neighborhood, neighboring houses ask. So primarily what we, we focused on were sort of architectural detailing that would get us to that expression that, that we heard from you. So I would like to give you, have you look at the rare, the back elevation. And that's primarily where you would see some of the, some of the changes. We added essentially an expression of a sort of a gable end to sort of, again, to create that feeling of that two and a half story house. So we also looked at deepening that, that gable end. So we have better shadows. So now what, what in reality is a three story, now it feels more of a two story with some dormers on both sides. So that would be sort of the, the primary change on the elevation toward the back and the neighboring house. Also on the, on the sides, we have the same sort of expression where we added a horizontal line to again.
Won't you show us where that is? Because I'm missing it.
You're missing it.
At the proposed left side elevation, I see a 40-foot chimney that just blows me away.
Right, so, so in the proposed left side elevation, we do, so there's two things happening in there. We have, yes, we do have the chimney that, that's in there and that elevation. On the right side, of course, it's not there. But what we did on both sides is add a line essentially on the third floor is a horizontal line. And at that point, we also changed the material. So not change the material, we used the material in a different way again to signify a difference in, you know, in sort of use, if you will. And, and then also in the front, if we go to the proposed front elevation, we also added some depth to that, to that expression again. We wanted to create that shadow. We want to create that feeling of a house that is two stories with, with a dormer. And we're hoping that this is what the board members were looking for. And we would like to hear some comments.
I get the front and the back look pretty nice, but that side is like, that really is a lot, that's a lot. Did you think of raising the knee walls on each side from the second floor where roof staffs lifting it up, putting a full dorm, I mean, three dormers on that? Maybe two or three dormers on this side? So it wouldn't look as big. You'd have dormers on the side. I know it's going to change the interior a bit, but architecturally you can make it work and it wouldn't look as bad as that, I don't think. That left side just really, really bothers me. What's the chimney taking care of? You got a fireplace downstairs?
Well, one option perhaps is that we could, rather than doing the horizontal band that we were showing, we could sort of continue the expression of the eve to, and we can adjust that to make sure that the, those two, that sort of, I think, it sounds to me that where you're reacting to is sort of that, that feeling of three stories and you want to break them up. And perhaps that band is not sufficient.
The front come out good. I like the way it looks. The rear, it's not too bad. I mean, it's that big giant chimney that looks at you, makes you look at that house completely different. You know?
Right, I mean.
Even, even a special steel pipe wouldn't even see, you wouldn't see. You know what I mean? It would just look different. It would blend in with the house. It wouldn't be this big chimney looking at you. I don't know. See how they, see how the rest of the board feels? I don't know. Mr. Himmel?
I don't know. Both left elevation and right elevation. I mean, it just looks like a three-story house.
Yeah.
Especially the left elevation, so.
I think the left elevation could use some work. Is the chimney existing or is that going to be?
That's existing chimney that, that exists right now. If you, we have the existing drawings, but there is a chimney right there. So I mean, the question of, I mean, I understand, you know, it's, we don't really want to be taking it out, right? I think that, out of character for.
You can talk to him, right? I want stuff a little better looking than that.
I think it looks like a three-story and also maybe you could encapsulate the chimney with siding that he's using on the house. So it blends in with the house. So it doesn't look like this 35 or 40 foot.
He changes that, that side just to look at it. Like you say, maybe in cases, make it look like something different. Make that roof line come down a little bit on the balcony side.
Yeah, we can, yeah, we can. I think a couple of things, if we, if we continue that eve expression, that would be in the left elevation. You see how the, both in the, you see the eve coming down on the front and the back, right? And, and we sort of, we stopped it. And we thought that horizontal line would be enough. But I think if we continue that, that expression all the way across, we probably would have to move it up a little bit just so it doesn't conflict with the windows. But if we do that in combination with hiding the chimney in some way, it may be, yeah, maybe encapsulating it with, you know, with siding as opposed to just.
What's the color of that going to be anyway?
Well, I'm not sure. We haven't really gotten, what's the color? No, yeah.
What's it going to be when you fin?
I mean, just some sort of tan earthy color. I mean, yeah, nothing.
That makes your eyes not look real.
Right, yeah, yeah. I mean, yeah, we, we don't want to stand out. We just, we want.
You're a pink house.
No, we're looking to blend it.
I see that you have 34 feet setback on the left side. Did you contemplate bumping the house out on the left? I, I know we're trying to add bedrooms and square footage and we're all struggling with how this third story is looking. Is there any feasibility to grow the house outward to the left where you have plenty, you have 34 feet on the left side?
34 feet, you can put 21-foot addition on that side, two stories. I can't hear you, sir. And we need you to speak up here because.
I said, we looked at it before. I think this question was asked, the idea was that we, we don't have still enough space if we just go sideways. We, to go around, it's the layout of the house, of the house wouldn't work with going sideways. And with the flood zone, we have to be still higher up. Can start from the same level.
I know, I don't know how far that's over. A lot of people go over and they just cover them and it's, it's in their crawl space section and you have a foot, two down. You have a step down.
Yeah, so when, when we looked at going on the, on the side, we, what we were able to add was just half of the size what we're looking to add now. And it wasn't enough for two bedrooms that we were trying to achieve.
I know, that we really need, right? But here's, here's where I sit here and I debate all the time. I make these decisions myself. There's people that live in that area might want the same thing. Are you going to have 23-story houses down there? Which you can't have. It's a zone A. I mean, what would I have done? I would have brought those knee walls up on the second floor. Second floor, bring your knee walls up, three feet, run it down all the way and put three, three or four dormers on there and get what you can get out of it. And it's.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think in many ways is sort of what, what we're trying to do, right? Just do, have, have it be a dormer expression on the sides, right? And I think that's really what we're trying to.
And you get a dormer expression, it's legal. You can do that. You can put dormers up on that.
Right, yeah. Yeah, so I'm sorry. I'm going back to this idea of being able to continue that, the eve, do a little bit of adjustment so we, so we have that. Yeah, because, sorry, going back to your, your point, I think there was first, you know, just growing to the side didn't give us enough square footage for what, what this new family's looking for. So that, that wasn't working.
You have two stories, you know, on there.
You could go two stories to the left.
Well, well, but additionally, it's also sort of, it becomes a much more, much more complex project as opposed to kind of going up and financially sort of puts a a different strain in the project. The decision, we figured, we thought this would be, as long as, as we were being sensitive to the architecture and the neighborhood, that this would be.
I don't think enough changes were made to the left elevation to satisfy the board.
It's just, I feel the same way, Ms. Barry. It's that left side. You're going to look at that. Coming down Rota Street, you're going to see this big giant wall. And it just, it's something we shouldn't build there. If you have dormers on there, change, change the way you're going to do it, put some dormers in there, try to get the best headroom you can. And it would have a different look. It would have a two and a half story look to it. Use your dormers. Well, I, I don't like this at all. I really don't. I don't. I couldn't vote for that. You can ask, yeah. Sure.
Just something I had to suggest, if this work. No, I should. No, so here. Creating, just give this all the power. Just creating this look and all.
Right, but, my, yes. I mean, there's, yeah, there's other options where we can sort of have a, kind of a, try to express also a pitch, as Bud you're saying, on the sides to mitigate the feeling of the three stories.
All right, we have February 11th open. Back February 11th? Try it again?
Sure.
All right.
Well, yeah, I guess, yeah, before we move on, if you don't mind, I think the honor is thinking that there's another idea where instead of just trying to continue, so again, the division with the eve is to try to create another gable on the, on both sides, that, that expression too. So you would have a, actually, so you, so you would break it up.
What are you talking about?
Yeah, sorry.
We can take a little time to understand where, where it's standing on that. So we could. Still going, you're still going to have that big wall there. You know what I mean? I mean, what we're looking at is something like, it's great. Dormers. And I know you're not going to have that, but you have two dormers. I don't know what you're going to do with that chimney. It's going to be in the way of that side. And that's the side we don't want to look, I don't know. When you go to the left, build an addition or get rid of your chimney and put some dormers on that side. I don't know what to tell you.
I mean, just adding an effect without taking away some of this third floor space isn't going to cut it.
Okay.
In my opinion.
Still Brian?
No, I think you're moving in the right direction. But, you know, we're just, one more, two more tweaks.
Okay.
Okay. And again, I think it's part of the proximity because what's standing behind you.
If you want to bring in a couple.
Couple renderings.
They can live with. You look at them both.
Okay.
Long as we get them, we need them a week, two weeks. So if you can get them out by the 28th, that work?
Yeah, I think so.
New plans?
Yep.
Two weeks, okay. Any other motion, February 11th, please?
ZBA 24-66, Adam Kepinski for variance and special permit. Add a third floor existing dwelling on the premise numbered 170 Rota Street. Make a motion to extend the next year into February 11th, 2025.
Second.
On the motion, standing on all in favor?
Aye.
Close, so moved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Further under tonight's agenda, ZBA 2449, Philip Baker for variance to convert the existing single-family dwelling into a two-family dwelling on the premise number 115 New Gruyere. Name an address.
Jeremy Abrams, Philip Baker, Rocket Design, or Seven Pleasant Street in Milton, Mass. So I think this petition was brought to the board maybe, was it nine months ago? Last year?
Yep.
It was a much larger project, a full third floor, all dormered. And I don't think at the time they had a, any sort of parking or layout for the rear yard. So they hired me, I came out. So we're kind of doing a smaller job essentially. So the existing rear and left one-story addition will become a two-story addition. And then they're doing smaller dormers in the attic to increase square footage on the third floor. So we're doing a 10-foot dormer on the left-hand side for the stairwell to get up to the attic. And the right-hand side, we're doing a six-foot dormer just for a bathroom, just to have enough for a five-foot, you know, wide tub enclosure, toilet and vanity. So essentially the first floor could be a one-two-bed, one-bath unit. And then the second and third floor, second and half floor would be the second floor, so second unit, so two-family conversion. So you'll have a second and third floor unit and a first floor unit.
What are the bedrooms on those again?
So you have the first unit, which is the, just the first floor is two beds, one bath. And then the other unit, which is the second and technically third floor would be three bedrooms, one on the second floor and then two into the attic space. And it's two baths, so one bath down, one bath up. Parking's in the rear. Uh, I did see engineering comments, um, that they wanted some sort of drainage or occult chamber. We have added a catch basin and a occult chamber into the backyard. So that's the most recent site plan that I attached a couple of days ago, just came into us recently, so I wanted to attach that for the board. So as I said, we're trying to do a smaller job. The rear decks, uh, on the proposed last time, uh, was the entire decks being torn off and much, much larger. This version, all we're doing is keeping the exact same deck footprint, not, no changes. Uh, the only change would be is to the staircase is being moved from the left side to the right side to allow for cars to pull down the driveway. So the decks are all staying the same, footprint's staying the same. Uh, what we're asking for is relief technically for a four-story building, because it is kind of a drive, not a drive under, but it's, uh, it feels like a four-story in the back because it's kind of a lower grade. But the attic level is only really a half floor, in my opinion, is just, they're smaller dormers. They're not, we're not dorming the whole left and right. The previous job was dormer in almost twenty-eight feet left and right. Uh, this is a ten-foot dormer on one side and a six-foot dormer on the other for a much smaller touch for the actual new structure. And we do have a couple, um, neighbors who had, um, were okay with the project. It was one nineteen, Newbury, uh, one fifty-seven, and ninety-nine. That should be attached in your notes as well. So one nineteen, one fifty-seven, and ninety-nine, all voiced there. Opinions to us. I think that's it on my end.
We'll read them into the record when it's... I, I just don't think that place should be a two-family house there. I, I just don't. I think a lot, lots horrible, way of going down the back. You know, you're just gonna load this whole thing up. You're five thousand square feet, you just wanna load it up. Just, it's so ugly in the back.
Awful lot of asphalt, too.
I just don't think it should be a two-family house there. It's just, it's just not enough space for the way it's set up there in the corner. And that other building's gonna be ripped down, just got ripped down. They're just fixing it and someone living there. I'm not, I don't, I don't like it myself, but you, uh, guys, it's up to you guys. What do you guys make of comment? I just, I don't think that should be a two-family house there. Any comments?
The entire left side of the property's gonna be asphalt, and then the entire back.
Yep.
I don't really care for, I think it's, once again, too, too much house with too small a lot.
I agree, it's a square peg in a round hole. It's too much house, it's, it doesn't look right. I think it's gonna be bad for the neighborhood. I don't think that it qualifies for, for what she's looking for.
On the proposed second floor plan, what's the dimension of the office den? I can't read it, it's too small.
Uh, ten-four by seven. And that's with the access to the sec, to the third floor. You walk through that space, it's kind of just an intermediate, like walkthrough. So you walk up the staircase to, to get through that space.
No, I'm looking at the room on the right with the door. It's a dedicated room. You have it March office slash den. It's not a walk... Oh, you mean you walk through to the stairs?
To the staircase, yeah, on the left-hand side.
Okay.
Yeah, obviously, you walk through that room to get up to the third floor.
I think it's too big of a structure overall.
Yeah, we tried, obviously, we're trying to get the five spots per, per zoning, so, you know, we don't wanna pave the entire lot, to tell you the truth, it's not what our intent is. Uh, it was more trying to get to the bylaw to say we're trying to get to five. You know, we're open to less parking, obviously, as everyone is, you know? We're a small joint to the IT. So any recommendation we'd have from you guys to, um, have any, we're looking for any feedback, so.
I think the house should be, be done as a single-family home, because that's what that lot calls for, and the way, the way it is, the way it's pitched, the people looking at it, there's a ball field behind you. Just, it's just, to me, it just doesn't work, it just doesn't work. And I don't think the house should, it should be a single-family house. That's what I think should be done. Build a nice-sized, single-family house and have someone have a beautiful home.
Mr. Cowan, do you know what's been with the post? Is that being rebuilt next month?
It's gonna be demo, we don't know yet. It's gonna be demo, we don't know yet.
It's done.
No, we don't know what, what it's gonna be. Any questions?
Uh, no, I'm good.
This is the owner, Hannah, as well.
Yep.
My name is Hannah Fenn. I'm the owner of the house, and I've been waiting to move in the loca... If this location, if this house is in a different area of Quincy, I would not even propose this project, but this house is literally five minutes to the train. And according to the city, um, and the whole Massachusetts now, they are encouraged more units for residents. And all over Massachusetts, there are shortages of housing. And I'm trying to do my best just to, to create more housing for myself, and even for the future, because we are like growing. And Massachusetts is growing such a fast speed that we don't even have enough housing all over for our residents. So I'm only and willing to do whatever it is, um, that the city, if you have any suggestion, I would try to be compliant to, just to create two units, um, for, more for my family and the future residents of Quincy. And, um, I'm willing, any plans, anyhow you want me to change, I'm willing to work with it, with Phil to revise the plan, how you think. And my whole purpose is just to create one more unit for, immediately for my, my family, because the, the, the high school, my daughter's entering high school, and that's, uh, North Quincy High is one of the very, very good high schools. And that's the main purpose, I want to move there. And I, I've been waiting for so long, so that my daughter can attend the, the school. I also have, uh, a college, uh, entering a college, and she really needs her privacy for, for college. So it's more for, I, I'm use, max use of space and, you know, and more for the future, too. I'm not trying to increase like, or make the, the house any bigger, but max use of what I have right now to have more privacy for my family. And, um, and I'm really consider for the, the facts that we are very close to the, um, train. And a lot of, I know that a lot of things are building there. And I'm only asking for an extra one, small units for the privacy of my college daughter.
It has nothing to do with your family, it has nothing to do with any of that. It has to do with, in, in one year, you could change and move.
I understand.
So it's that house will always be there, this big giant structure that I don't think should be there. So I don't want to see a two-family there, I don't.
Even if I, I can make it any, I'm keeping the, the same structure. I'm not changing the structure. I'm, I'm just wanna more of a separate unit.
I know what you want. I'm not in favor. This is me, your four other people, if they wanna vote for it, they might. I don't.
If you have any suggestion for me, I would gladly take for any recommendation you have.
I do. Make, make a decent-sized, single-family house for yourself and live there.
There's multiple, um, already, most of the, the, um, the neighbors are already kind of the same structure, same house, and multifamily. And we have enough parking as required by the city.
You're not gonna change my mind, that's just the way I feel. Maybe I've been here too long, I don't know, twenty-something years, maybe this time, I don't know. I look at the city as a different place. This was my town, I lived here my whole life. Well, ninety-nine percent of it probably, and I want it built right. I, I want things right, I, I want things to look right. I wanna look at this big giant structure, you know? Guys who won't be playing football, it's just a big house standing by itself. I just, to me, it's not.
But the house will be the same.
You can say what you want, talk to them, really. I, I wouldn't vote for that in a million, in a million years, there's no way I'd vote for that. Any, any other comments, then?
I believe it's too much house with too small a lot.
Yep.
I agree.
Same.
All right, so we can do one of two things. We can vote for it, or you can withdraw, one of the two. You can vote, we can vote for it, you can appeal it, you can bring it to the state, you can do what you want.
We'll withdraw.
Okay. Have a motion withdraw, please?
ZBA twenty-four dash forty-nine, Philip Baker for variance to convert existing single-family dwelling into two-family dwelling on the premise number one-one-five, Newbury Ave. Quincy, make a motion to withdraw, now, pray to God.
Second.
On the motion, seeing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so moved. Further on tonight's agenda, ZBA twenty-four seventy-seven, Mr. Barber, for variance to add a second story to the front deck and add an attached shed to the rear corner of the dwelling on the premise number eighty-seven, Dorchester Street. Just did this a while ago, didn't we?
Yes.
Yeah. Oh, look who it is, Mr. Cow. What's up?
Good evening, I'm here with Brian Karenz and Chris Barber. This past spring, you, uh, the board went out of their way to be very helpful. We took a dilapidated two-family and converted it over to a single. They worked hard through the summer. I never saw such a demolition job to be done methodically, no impact to the neighbors. So we're here tonight basically for two requests. Number one, because the foundation is now a code-compliant foundation because of the flood blame, is the cellar isn't a cellar as we all know it. So as a result, they decided they'd like to put a storage shed, which is used in other yards to house the snowblower, the lawnmower. Inspection Services has gone out of their way to be helpful, and they suggested they return. Number two, what they're doing is there was, shall we say, a farmer's deck across the front of the house. That's gonna be cut in half, and the deck is going on the left side to be cut in half. And then above that will be a deck where the beautiful view of Boston will be. So, um, at the request of the Building Inspection Services and Ms. Griffin, that's why we're here tonight. We're moving along, it is under construction, and if anybody has seen it, I think it's an improvement to the neighborhood, so I have the applicants here.
The living space would be downstairs in the second floor, is the dining room and all that, no?
Correct.
All right, so, so upstairs where your, your party up...
Chris, this is Christopher Barber.
So that was kind of, um, when we just, when we started demolitions, framing, just the views were, we, we wanted to pivot, and so we made it upside down. And with that, we, we thought it would be, it would be, we've, we've shrunk the foot...
You get the beautiful view, but you need something to stand on.
Correct. So we shrunk, we shrunk the footprints. It, it went from basically a forty-three-foot wide, the entire, uh, to twenty-six-foot wide deck, but it would now be a two-story deck.
I got it.
Same, and then the old shed will be in...
Yep, and the living space, exactly, downstairs, and the entertainment space is upstairs, that's why...
Whatever you want.
I get it, it's a beautiful view there, I get it. I don't have any questions.
No, sure isn't approved, but what is there, so?
What a holler for. I have no questions. Mr. Chin?
No, no questions yet.
No questions?
Attorney Carol, the storage shed, is that what I'm looking at, attached to the structure?
Yes.
Okay.
It's unconditioned storage shed, and, uh, I, I don't know if it'd be useful or not, but it, we took some photos of, but Director Butters have similar, right on zero.
I just want to understand on the plan, so I'm looking at it on the plan, bottom corner?
Yep. It would just be unconditioned storage for grill...
I find mine everywhere.
Seasonal storage.
I understand, thank you.
So, Brian?
Yeah, you can't have a second story, they would not have a deck on that.
Exactly.
Looking out there.
First thing they'll do is put up curtains, so they can't...
Let's see what the people think. Thank you, Mr. Cow.
Thank you.
If anyone wants to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call closed. I got a letter here from the EPW that we reviewed just the middle of the barber's case and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or on the side? First call, second call, third call, no, I'm not voting, yes. For a motion, please? I think we're all there?
Yeah.
Yes, all right.
ZBA twenty-four dash seventy-seven, Christopher Barber for variance to add a second story in front deck and add an attached shed to the rear corner of the dwelling on the premise number eighty-seven, Dorchester Street. Quincy, make a motion to accept this presentation.
Second.
On the motion, seeing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Thank you, Mr. Cow.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, a two-family in that, that was a holler for. Could have been the best thing that could have happened. Next case, ZBA twenty-four eighty-six, Attorney Patrick Foley for variance and finding to construct a third story above the existing footprint of a non-conforming structure on the premise number one-twenty-two, one-twenty-four, Handham Circle.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Patrick Foley, business address two sixty-five Willard Street in Quincy, and I'm the attorney for the project here tonight. I'm joined here by our architect as well. The property we're here to discuss tonight is one-twenty-two dash one-twenty-four Handham Circle. This is a four thousand five hundred and forty-nine square foot lot, which is an owner-occupied two-family. The applicant comes from a family with strong ties to the community that spans three generations. The applicant is very active with the Wallaston Yard Club, and by the number of support letters on file, really goes out of their way to be nothing but a good neighbor, um, to everybody in the neighborhood they come across. The applicant has owned this two-family for the last five years, and they're actually about to embark on a remarkable act by adopting a thirteen-year-old girl to come live with them. Adding a teenage girl to the family is the reason that we're here for our request tonight. Handham Circle is a mix of anywhere from single-family homes all the way up to a four-family. Almost every single lot on this street is a pre-existing non-conforming lot. This property here is no different. What the applicant is seeking to do here tonight is the applicant is seeking to remove the hip roof and add a third story, which will give the owner more living space for their growing family. The addition will not, excuse me, the addition will not trigger any new variances. The height is within the three-story limit that residential B allows. And the stories is, three stories within residential B allows, and the height is also under, um, the variances. Um, the footprint of the building will not be changing at all. The front setbacks, the rear setbacks, and the side setbacks will all be staying the same. Um, the FAR will be increasing. The FAR is already pre-existing non-conformant at zero-point-four-six. With the addition going up, that will increase to zero-point-six-five. We're also proposing to add two parking spots, um, that we added because through my experience of coming up here, um, every time that even, you know, you're looking to increase a little, little more living area there, um, there is a need for some parking. Unit one, that's right there now currently, the three-bedroom, that unit will not be changing at all. Um, unit two will be the one where you see the most significant amount of changes. There'll be no changes in the bedrooms. By going up, right now currently, the way it lays out is there's two bedrooms, a kitchen, a living room. The alterations will be done with, on that first floor. What they'll do is they'll open, they'll open it all up. You'll have a kitchen, living room, uh, dining room. And then when you go upstairs to the second floor of unit two, that's where the two bedrooms will be, uh, as well. So if you just wanna just walk through the floor plan a little bit, and, um...
Foley, did, did she take her notes? Did you take her notes? Were you here for that?
Uh, Mr. Chair, she's late.
All right. If you could, Mr. Chin, please swear her in.
If you, if you're gonna testify tonight, could you reach her?
Please take her notes.
Just to tell the truth, then nothing but the truth, and matter known here.
Thank you. Name and address, please? Yours?
Oh, uh, it's Patricia Wildborn, and it's twenty-four Wild Road, Newbury Ave.
Thanks.
Okay, so this is, this is the unit that we're, we're discussing. Living room, there are two bedrooms, dining room, bathroom, kitchen. What we did is we opened up the floor plan on this floor, and it's still a living room, dining room, there's a, like, an office area, bathroom, kitchen, stay the same.
Yep.
We put the stairs to the third floor in the back.
The office area has no walls, I saw.
No, top.
And we, now the two bedrooms, proprietary area on the third floor, master bed, master bedroom with deck, uh, closets, and this is the bedroom for the teenage girl. And there is a shared bath right across the hall, and a tiny living area, just hangout area. So what we did is we proposed to take off the low-hip roof. This actually raises the entire structure up by only five feet. And with the shed dormers either side, it gave us ample room. And with the shed dormers either side, it gave us ample room. So 22.4, 27.4. And is that it?
That's it.
In the back.
Counsel, the way you have these parking spaces falling in, I personally don't see it working to get it down. Here's my remedy for this. You have a garage back there.
Yes.
And you got a parking anywhere, right?
There's two spots out in the garage right now, yep.
Once you get rid of the garage, put four spaces in the back over here and then you have a beautiful place and you can do what you want. The garage is in the way right now. It's in the way of drivers, it's in the way, it's in the way of the client.
Okay.
And there's not a turn and radius there.
Yeah, are you talking about taking out the garage and then using the open space as just paving the open space?
Four parking spaces in the back.
In the back?
Yeah.
So you got two, you got two, you got two. So you'd have, you saw it, four, whatever, you'd have more down there. You have guests come over, they'd have plenty of room too.
Mr. Chair, I just messed up my plan.
Yeah, sure, good. Take ten. I just think it's in the way, you know? Either that or put the garage back on that corner, I don't know. You just think, you just, there's no turn and radius to get it. You just can't, I mean, how do you get in there? Back foot, you just don't, you know? There's four of them over here. Those are gone, you have four spaces, you can back out here and take off, back out here and take off, you know? No, but this is right here. Say we move. You move these spaces. Right here, now they're pulling, no closer there. Or maybe, so you gotta do is back up and go, back up and go. This will be open.
It's not a quote study.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's going down there already, isn't it? That whole gate, going back through the dimensions.
Yeah. Not bad.
Not bad. No, I know, but, but you don't have that turn and radius, you just don't. If you move, if you moved it over, moved it, the lot line with the house, right? Fucking. Just all that new pavement I want, I want over there is.
No, that's existing.
I want pavement.
Need two spaces there, okay?
Just, just rip this out.
Yep.
Rip the garage out, move the parking over a little. Now we're there, you got a turn radius to back up. It don't have to be right against the house, even if it's four spaces, you can back up and loosen this.
Yeah, so the net is the same number of bedrooms.
It's 27 feet.
It's 47.
Yes, the net number is only two bedrooms.
Plus two, right?
Yes.
So you move this over three feet. Nine, eighteen, twenty-one feet, you got 26 feet turning radius, right?
Mr. Chair, they use, they use their garage as a use as a little workspace, so.
So we were just discussing, would it be acceptable to enclose the area under the deck, leave it the way it was, close that area under the deck and make that his workspace and then pave the rest and make it maybe, you know, permeable pavers? So it's not so asphalt-y.
Yeah, you don't want the asphalt, and I was gonna say, just whatever you can do to get rid of all the asphalt in the back.
Does that work for you? I mean, if we enclose under the deck and just make that his, like, workshop?
How much space is under there anyway?
It's enough for a one car.
Yeah, just we get one car in there, yeah.
Is that gonna, is that gonna?
But it can be.
Is that gonna ruin your workshop? Space, though. You gotta get four cars down here, what do you got for space? The back of the house, I can't read it. Yeah. Yeah, I can't. Holy Jesus. Like a movie going on here, this these.
Keep it up, you're gonna need a jog.
Gonna need something. What's this, 20? Forty-eight, nine?
Yep.
So you got, you need, you need nine, nine thirty-six you need, correct?
Yes.
To get out of there. That works.
Does that work for everybody?
That works?
Yep.
Yeah, that works. And then I have four spaces in the back, put pavers all in, the new stuff's gonna be all paved. You know, cut the line where the asphalt is up there already, cut it down straight and then put pavers in all the new stuff, so won't affect nothing, right? Yeah, remove the garage and then they're gonna put, they're gonna enclose underneath the deck.
At the end of the day, two bedrooms.
Make a little room.
No, the bedroom count stays the same. Yeah, so the unit one's three. We're not touching unit one at all. Unit two is currently two bedrooms now. The addition, the two bedrooms are going to the second floor of it and the first floor of unit two is just, it would be like a basic first floor of any house you went into, with the living room, dining room.
Yeah, it's more open space. We took down walls.
Yeah, there's no enclosed walls.
You don't have any bedrooms in unit one.
No, no, no.
How many bedrooms are existing in unit one?
Unit one's three.
Three, so we have, we, there's currently five and you're gonna net five?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm just moving them up.
Move them up.
Yeah, just more open plan, so.
Bring the teenager in.
Space, livable space. All right, so we're gonna put pavers in anything new over there. Take the line of the houses you're coming down and make sure it cuts straight. Instead of going in there, make, and then you see new pavers, just make it all work architecturally and pretty. Those are our, anyone else comments? Ms. Chin, anything?
No, nothing further.
Good, good. You guys can have a seat.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in favor of this project? Please step forward. First call, second call, third call closed. I got a letter here from the DPW.
He didn't ask for opposition. Opposition.
No, I just didn't say. No one wanted it. Now I'm talking about the DPW. I have a DPW letter here, they reviewed the best reference project, have no comments. Is there anyone opposing or undecided?
Your counsel is.
Please step forward, oh.
And the counsel is out of back.
Yeah. Name and address for the record, please.
Line here, 142 Handham Circle.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm coming to talk about my objection about this firing application. Lady, the lawyer has said the project has already had a lot of zoning violations. So the building is already too big for, right now, the FAR is .46. And it's only allowed to be .4. And currently, the building is 2,111 square feet and it's only allowed to be 800, 1,820 square feet. And besides that, the front yard and side yard is also not compliant with the zoning regulations. And this is really small lot. And because it's such a small lot, the zoning only allowed to be a single family, not a two-family, you thought two-family building. Now it's already a two-family building, so it's another violation happening. Instead of improving the situation, the owner proposing to add to the square footage to 2,994 square feet and change the, increase the FAR to .655. So the violation is going to be 1,174 square feet and 65% bigger than what's only allowed because of these, these changes, these extensions. And the neighbor, the immediate neighbors, if I do some research, they, those are all single-family, they're two and two, two on the left side, two on the right side, they're all single-family units. They're all two, two stories. And the square footage is no more than 1,400 square feet. Okay? So this proposal, make this building is one story taller than the neighbors and two times, two times bigger than neighbors' houses. By increasing that, you know, it kind of deprive, sorry, going to diminish the privacy and access to sunlight of the already deprived. So, sorry, so those are the already deprived privacy and access to sunlight because of the existing violation. By increasing that, that, that privacy and the access to sunlight even worse. Think about this, right now, everyone want to put solar panel on the roof. Now they add the other level on top next to, to the neighbors. So labor cannot even, like, save money putting solar panel on the roof because of their profit. Okay? So in the same time, my, my situation, because of the, I think you guys can remember the, the buildings row project, building such a big house next to my house, my quality of life really diminished because now I can't even open a window because of the big house, the window facing my, my bedroom now. So this situation to the immediate neighbor is even more prolonged because of the size and the site, because the site is so small and proximity to the, to the neighbors. If you don't look at the number, if you really look at numbers, see the significance of the increase. So to me, I feel like the project is not betterment for the city, it's not betterment for the neighborhood. It's only further diminish the neighbor's quality of life if it's approved. It is an unfair trade of neighbor's rights and well-being for the profit of one family, setting back precedents for the city to adjudicate future appeals. The existing noncompliance should not be an excuse for further infringement of the interest of the neighbors. The proposed extensions is substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming structure to the neighborhood. It's getting worse. Yes, the existing condition is not good, but the new addition is making it even worse. They have the, they have the opportunity to make this situation better. Again, remember that, the site only allowed one unit and they already have two. If the space is important for them, they can always make it better by taking part of the first floor, make it become their own unit or change their two-family back to one, so they have a giant single family for their own satisfaction. So there's no reason to add to that to make the neighbor, to take advantage of the neighbor's interests. So this is my, my argument. So I appreciate that. I hope the zoning law will protect, again, too, the sign, the neighbor's assignments doesn't mean that they agree to the project here. Thank you for letting me talk, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else opposed or undecided? Want to go on top? What's this?
Letter of opposition.
Oh, sorry. You're going for the record? There's a letter here, opposition. I'm sorry, thank you. I am court.
Name, lay show, lay hue. Message, dear Chairman.
That's him?
Yes, sir.
Okay, never mind, he just spoke to, he'll have to go on the record. No, 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 that's fine. That's fine. That's funny, that's fine.
Thank you, sir, I'm sorry.
All right, anyone else, last call? All our party hearing closed. I'm voting yes for a couple of reasons. Couple of reasons is, I would have voted no, when I was looking at it, I was gonna say no, until, until the garage would go. You're getting more cars off the street, you're keeping the same number of bedrooms and they're just asking for more living space. And I get it, I get it. The law hasn't caught up here yet and it should have, it should have 100, probably 20 years ago, but it hasn't. Now you have a right to sunlight too. And there's, and there's, there's angles, there's, there's time limits with that law, which they have in other states. We should have it here. And I've talked about trying to get it here, which we don't have. It's not fair to anybody if it's gonna impede their sunlight. That would bother me. But the way it's situated, I believe that wouldn't. Is it gonna be a little different? Yeah, it'll be a little different, but they have the same rights too. They're in, they're in a zone B where they can make two-family homes. That's, that's what they were made for. But you have two parking spaces on that lot and we can, now we're gonna get four cars off, off the street. And a two-family house, you're gonna have more than two cars. I don't care what anyone says, we're gonna have people come over, so. And that's the reason I'm voting yes.
I'm voting yes also for the parking, the fact that the garage is going down. The new, the new parking will be used with pavers instead of asphalt. So I'll be voting yes.
I'm voting in favor because of the lack of increase in the bedrooms and the additional parking. I don't think it's gonna be overly detrimental to add what they want to add here.
I'll be voting yes.
I'll be voting yes and the reason being, it's only going up five feet. To me, that's negligible. If it was 12 or 15, or exceeding 31, I'd have a problem with it. Plus, the number of bedrooms is technically remain the same.
Have a motion, please.
ZB A 24-86, Attorney Patrick Foley, variance and finding to construct third floor, third story above the existing footprint on a nonconforming structure on the premise number 122, 124 Handham Circle, Quincy, Mass. The extended parking areas will be used with pavers. The garage will be removed and we are approving under the text to be enclosed for a workshop. Make a motion to accept.
Second.
On the motion, seeing that all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, still move. Thank you. Further on to tonight's agenda. ZB A 24-82, Carlos Caraballo, for variance, special permit for a client to construct a two-story, two-story, single-family dwelling on the premise number 166 Bassett Street.
Good morning, Chairman, member of the board. My name is Carlos Caraballo. I represent the after-grade architects on 529 Main Street, Chestnut Hill. I'm representing the client, Mr. Nugent, Harrison Nugent and Christine Nugent. I was here before with this project, two years ago. So we went to back and forth. Originally, we proposed a two-family's building and then the board request to reduce us to single-family. And we went through a bunch, a series of upgrade to the design until finally met your approval. The client at that time was okay, but unfortunately, they had a financial hardship and couldn't be able to build this house. So now they are, were ready to start building the house and we were notified that the approval was expired. And I'm coming back with the same design you guys approved. We haven't changed anything. Everything is the same. We discussed everything. We discussed the, close to the setback on the left side, we discussed to install or apply a fire retarder more in that area of that face of the building. We talked about having either piles or if we're gonna use foundation, have it event, which is provide. The two, I mean, it's a same, we meet the height. It's basically, the design haven't changed since we met two years ago. It's, I don't know if you remember that project?
I remember, I remember.
We had a hard time, but thank you for the chance at time. And it's just, again, client just had a hardship, financial hardship and now they're ready to move forward.
All right, on, on the property now, one, one of the things that was advertised, I'll tell you what was advertised, here's what it said. Says to construct a two-story, single-family dwelling while leaving the existing dwelling on the parcel undisturbed on the, on this is number 166 Bassett Street.
It's gone.
No, I know, I know. You didn't want that. The last time, we were gonna rip the house down.
Yeah, we. It's empty, it's.
I guess, but, but how did this? I didn't know how that happened. When I read it, I goes, how did that even get in here? I don't know. That was just a mistake on type code from before.
Because on the system that I researched, you know, on this house, it hasn't been updated.
Right, right.
I was under the impression.
Okay.
I misinherited you, so I apologize.
No, because the last one, we looked it up online and it said that the house will be removed. And then, of course, it is. And then, of course, I don't know how, I just wanted to know how that's updated. At least one hand says it's right. But I just, right, okay.
Thank you.
And I'm fine, I'm fine with what you're building. And I'm fine, I'm fine with what you're building, a single-family home there, enjoy the property, enjoy it, I think you did a great job. Last time we had a round, I know, round, 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 we never got there.
I don't have, I don't have problems as long as existing property is raised.
No questions?
No questions, thank you.
Been so long, I can't judge. Although something did change.
No, nothing changed. Oh, yeah, that's the only thing, but nothing changed.
If it went down by now, by the time that was a skyrocket, it's not skyrocketing. Here we go, you want to ask one? All right, you can have a seat.
Thank you.
If anyone here wants to speak in favor? First call, second call, I guess no one's here, third call, all are closed. I have a letter here from the D P W, I'm gonna put in the...
Date, December fourth, twenty twenty-four, one sixty-six Vassel Street, case number ZB A twenty-four dash eighty-two, review the submitted for the above-reference project. Our comments are as follows: One, install a shut-off valve and box on the sidewalk for water service. Provide a grading plan for review if there is any change in grade due to development. Three, install a clean-out for the sewer service. Four, upon completion of the project, as-built plans showing all utilities building footprint needs to be submitted along with a digital file. Elevation certificate should also be submitted if the property is in the flood zone.
All our party hearing closed, if anyone opposed or undecided? First call, second call, Court, you wanna speak out there? Third call? All our party hearing closed, I'll be voting in favor.
In favor.
I'm in favor as well.
In favor.
Have a motion, please.
ZB A twenty-four eighty-two, Carlos Caraballo, for a variance special permit, F P O D, to construct two-story single-family dwelling while on the premise numbered one sixty-six Vassel Street, Quincy, Mass, while raising the existing property and make a motion to accept.
Second.
On the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, still move.
What about...
Edwin Street.
Yeah, I'm going back there now, not even here. So we have here ZB A twenty-four fifty-five. They know what we wanted, we talked about it, they still sent it again, and they didn't show up, no letter, Ms. Court?
No.
Questions, no, Ms. Holland, no confirmation with them at all, nothing? One or two things we could do, we can either vote on it, if they're not here, or give them two more weeks, and we're just voting on it anyway. What do you think, guys? You know what I do?
Let's get rid of it.
Does anyone like it? I don't know, does anyone like that, closing in all those buildings atop them? I don't at all, I think that part building will fall away.
The only change they made that I can interpret is they're gonna fix the pitch of the roof, but they still want the addition.
They're gonna fix it, and they're gonna have to fix it, but why do you wanna close that? You're gonna change the whole look of that building, that will look so ugly, it really will.
And I think they'll turn it into...
So why don't we give it to the eleventh, give it February eleventh, not next meeting, make it wait till February eleventh, because it's not on the agenda. Can you give us feeling? All right? Make a motion to...
Motion, ZB A twenty-four fifty-five, Dan Handvarius, to enclose the three balconies attached to the townhouses and local garages on the premise number one, Edwin Street, Quincy, make a motion to extend to, meeting of two eleven twenty-five.
Second.
On the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, still moves. Motion, Jen, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed, still moves. Thank you, everyone.
Welcome.